God, I had to do the intro. Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 24, 2020. We're going to begin this evening with executive session, and then we will be resuming into open session thereafter. Mr. Chair, if you could read the motion for us to enter into executive session, please? He's muted.
You said, "Mr. Chair," I assume you meant just the chair.
Oh, Mr. Clark, I'm sorry.
Okay. I will make most of the Select Board, most of the Select Board vote pursuant to that General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and B, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body if the Chair so declares.
And the Chair does declare that an executive session is necessary to protect the litigating position of the Board.
Second?
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, roll call vote, please. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. We will be convening into executive session, and we will see you shortly. Thank you. Good evening, Littleton. We are back from our executive session meeting. This is a Select Board meeting for Monday, August 24, 2020. I am going to begin tonight's meeting by starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a reading of the mail, followed by departmental board updates and requests.
I believe the three people in the room are back, adjusted the pledge of allegiance. You're entitled to come to the public hearing, and we'll be resuming.
I think I just got a message from Judy saying that no audio was coming out.
Oh. Are we good?
Say it.
Okay. Some technical difficulties. Our apologies. Okay, so we are Select Board meeting, Monday, August 24, 2020. We're going to start this evening with the reading of the mail. That will be followed by Department Board updates and requests. Town Clerk update on early voting. The Police Department has a request for an increase in the number of part-time dispatchers. The DPW has capital requests. The Littleton High School light and a roll-off truck. The Department of Public, DPW, has another request for approval of a 2020 international dump truck. We're going to get an update from the Sewer Working Group. The Littleton Electric Light Water Department has an approval of amended language to House Rule 4866, an act authorizing the town of Littleton to use certain land for conservation of a water treatment facility without Article 97 restrictions on such use. That will be followed by public input and members' updates. At 7:45, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Council on Aging to discuss EHS space needs. That will be followed by Select Board discussion, including the town administrator position posting, the town administrator search committee task update, the appointment of a member to task with municipal management experience, a reserve fund transfer request, a letter of support for House Bill 4865 and House Bill 4866, a letter to the MMA opposing its support of House Bill 4860. That will be followed by, at 9:00 PM, the town administrator update, which will include a continued discussion on operational considerations for reopening town offices to the public, a review of special town meeting articles and deadlines, Select Board meeting scheduled for 2020, a service counter project update, as well as general updates. At 9:30, we will have a consent agenda. We're going to vote and sign the deputy fire chief and deputy police chief contracts, and we're going to vote to sign the interim town administrator contract, and that will be followed by minutes, and then our meeting will adjourn. Thank you. So, Mr. Layden, if you could begin with a reading of the mail?
Sure thing. Within your pack, there are two items. One was a program and change with Comcast, and the second was a, it's a repeat letter having to do with the state programs, that small, short-term grant. Chris, our DPW director, and I have been talking about a proposed project, and we just need to touch base in order to finalize, make sure we can get things together for that.
Okay. All right, great. So now, we're on to Department Board updates and requests. I see that we have the town clerk on the call. If she is there and wanted to provide an update on early voting, that would be wonderful.
Evening. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to do a quick update as far as what is going on with the early voting. Today, we have mailed out about 2,100--
We can't hear you, Diane.
Can you wait one second? We can't hear you, sorry.
Mark, all our volume is down?
Diane has a bad connection.
Um, so is--
Okay. So today, we've mailed out about 2,100--
I think I can hear it coming out of Joe's computer, but not out of here.
Yeah.
There's nothing--
So like, we can actually hear it from your computer?
Sorry, Diane.
I guess there's nothing to report.
Because we turn the bottom of this one, right?
Say something now? A little.
It's like you can hear it out of that one.
Yeah.
I can, we can, Mark, we can hear a little bit out of the speaker.
Because I thought we had shut the volume off this one.
Yeah, I think he's trying to get it out of those speakers.
Oh, sorry, Diane.
Can you hear her now?
Diane, can you say something? She can't hear up. Diane, can you hear, can you say something?
Yes, I can hear up in front of the chair.
Oof.
Yeah.
That's--
I wonder--
I can't hear, I can't hear.
No.
It's a brand-new, it's a brand-new--
Paul, can you say something?
He's muted.
I can't hear Paul at all.
Hello, hello?
I can't hear Paul now. I can't hear from outside.
Generally, folks don't complain when they can't hear me.
Diane--
You couldn't come down here, you've got enough people.
That's true.
Yeah. Diane, do you want to come down? Okay.
Should we?
I notice at all the staff meetings, her microphone is terrible. Notice that too, don't you?
Yeah. But she sometimes dials in, so.
Perfect.
My mic does everything, yeah?
I know. Look at this.
Dr. Windows. Sorry about that, folks.
That's okay.
Live TV, we love it, right?
Hello!
Do I need my mask?
I think you'll be more than 16 feet away.
You're far enough away.
So, thank you for having me. Sorry about the, whatever was going on. So, to date, we've sent out about 2,100 early voter ballots to all of the residents in town that have requested them. We also have sent out about 100 absentee ballots as well. And over the weekend, so Saturday, Sunday, and then today, we sent, we had about 100 people come through the doors. Not a great number, but at least we had some people come through the doors. We're hoping to get a few more people come through the doors within the next several days. Ours are 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Friday. So, we're down at the middle school. So, people, please come down, you know? If you're nervous, there are definitely no lines. So, you don't have to worry about that. The other thing, people are questioning, you know, where can they bring their ballots once they have voted with the mail-in ballots? So, they can come right to Town Hall, and as you look at the main entrance to the door, you can put it to the left. There's a big pink sign that says, "Place your ballots here." So, we are checking that lockbox every hour during the regular business day. So, the tax collector comes down during the day. When I come back from being down at the polls, I'm checking that all the time. And so, don't worry, it's not too full. We are checking it, and so, all the ballots are fitting in there without any issues. So, if you have any other questions, if you are concerned that you didn't get a ballot, please give the office a call. I am checking all the messages. I did return 17 phone calls that I received today. I did get back to every, every one of those people that did leave a message. Just because I'm not in the office the entire time, I am getting back to everyone. And that's basically everything that's going on. People are concerned that I'm not getting the ballots. I am getting the ballots. We're not getting everything into the system, the ones that we've gotten back right away, but we are getting the ballots. So, don't be concerned. So, the post office is working diligently to get the ballots out. Today, I had another 80 ballots that I had to put out, went right up to the post office, handed it to them right at the counter, and they're keeping them in town. So, they're not sending them like they normally did before. They used to send them off, it went to either Shrewsbury or Woburn, and then came back to Littleton. They're not doing that anymore. They're keeping it right in town and delivering it directly to the residents.
Okay. Great.
So, that's what's going on.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the extra time.
Any questions or comments from the Board for Diane?
Great, great job. I don't envy you.
Thank you so much, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can wipe that down. Nobody else is coming in, right?
Yeah, it's okay. Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a request from the Police Department to increase the number of part-time dispatchers. Do you know if you add any background on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, in the Board's packet, we have a memo from Chief of Police, Mr. Pinnard, requesting the increase from four permanent part-time communications officers to five. This is something that requires Select Board approval. I do see that we have Deputy Chief Patterson on the Zoom call as well, if you have any questions.
Okay. And these positions were previously approved? Is that correct?
Correct, the four.
Yep, okay. Well, I certainly know there's increase in demand on that department. I don't have any questions or comments for the Deputy Chief. Does anybody else on the Board?
I just noticed that the department's running real smooth this week. I don't know why.
Is someone on vacation? Did I miss something?
Yeah, and he's safely out of telephone range, so he's not going to hear about Joe's comment either.
I'm sorry if I missed this. Is there going to, is there a change in, like, where's the funding for extra, the extra dispatchers coming from? The pay?
So--
If you want to unmute yourself, Deputy.
Jefferson-- Okay, there you go.
How you doing? So, that would come out of our regular budget for the dispatchers. As you know, part-time is not benefited, and they only work when we have shifts available. One of our main concerns right now is we have one of our full-time evening dispatchers that's going to be going out on maternity leave, and she'll be out for a while. Our current part-time staff, they all have full-time jobs elsewhere, and we just want to make sure we have enough to cover this whole time she's going to be out.
Got it. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Want a motion, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Glavy.
Unless someone else has a comment or question, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll move that the Board vote to increase the number of permanent part-time communication officers from four to five.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Paul.
Wait one second, Paul. We're having volume issues again.
I've got it up full blast on my end, so.
Sorry, it's us again. Trying to hear, I think I hear like static, but it's coming from that TV.
Right.
So.
Would someone else like to read the motions tonight rather than stopping every time here? I mean, I have no problem giving that up. It's all in the packet.
Yeah, sure, I can do it.
And I'll just wave my hands when I want to say something.
Let me find that here. Move that the Board vote to increase the number of permanent part-time communication officers from four to five.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy? And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Thank you very much. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
So, because now Chris will be elevated to a panelist to speak.
Okay.
We need to resolve that sound issue. Otherwise, we won't be able to hear Chris either.
I wonder what's going on with it?
Yeah, so, Mark, we may need some assistance to try to identify what's going on with the sound, because it seems we can hear it from the control booth.
Is that where it's, I thought it was coming from that?
I thought it was, but that was on, actually on zero. So, if we put on the, these TVs, they're so close to the mics that it will get the feedback.
But it's not coming from these speakers, which it usually does?
Right now, at least, no sound is coming from those.
Okay.
So.
Check, check. You hear a sound now, right?
Yep.
We do.
Yeah, I don't know, it's coming in crystal clear in here. That's, I'll leave this door open, and maybe that'll help.
Okay.
Until I figure out what's going on.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so the next agenda item is we have a DPW capital request, and we have Mr. Stoddard on the call, if he would like to maybe speak to these requests, that would be wonderful. Hi, Chris.
Yeah, hello. So, this is a couple items that were, we kind of discussed this back in May, I think it will actually, I guess during the budget season. Obviously, we couldn't have funded it then. We have extra money in snow and ice because we had a fairly light year, so we have approximately $321,000 left. What my request would be is to purchase the roll-off truck for the transfer station that we discussed, for cost of, it's--
About $193,000. And then the remainder of it, for the traffic signal at the high school, that's actually fully designed and approved. The reason we haven't gone up to bid yet is because we don't have enough money. We have approximately $164,000 left.
The estimate from Green is coming in at $310,000, so we're short $159,000. If you add up the $159 plus the $195, that's actually over the $321. So, the request would be, I've talked to Cheryl about this, and potentially, there's some money in the reserve fund, or capital reserve fund. We need approximately $33,000 to cover both items. We can, obviously, the light, everybody, I think, I think knows what that project is, but it's a traffic signal at the actual intersection of King Street and the high school driveway. And then the roll-off truck, I think, you know, we discussed it back, I think it was during, actually, the rate case, the rates, the rate conversation for the transfer station. This will save us approximately $50,000 a year for the transfer station. So, yeah, I guess, if you have any questions.
The roll-off truck, Chris, how long will that probably be in service?
We figure 20 years.
Oh.
And the, when we did the math on how long it would take to pay it back, which is approximately three and a half years, we figured on putting $10,000 into a reserve fund a year to be able to purchase a new one in 20 years, or at least the vast majority of one.
Okay. Yeah, I think so. I know we had discussed this before, and you had provided a lot of detail in the past, Chris. I certainly don't have any questions, and, you know, the high school light has been something that we've been wanting to get done for a long time, and certainly, there's a need there. And then the roll-off truck, I thought, was a great solution for the transfer station. So, I don't know if there's any other comments or questions from members of the Board?
Is this a request to put this on the warrant with money from the reserve fund to fill out the rest of the funding?
Is that, oh, that's a question. Yes. Yeah, yeah, I guess the, it would be a warrant article to be funded using the remainder of snow and ice, and then the deficit there to be covered under the capital, capital reserve fund.
Thanks.
I'm assuming is what, how Cheryl wants to do it?
Great.
All right, great. Any other questions or comments from the Board?
None from me.
Do we have a motion?
Paul, can you talk, or shall I do it?
I can talk. Can you hear me is the question?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Then I will move that the Board vote to support the Department of Public Works' capital request for the Littleton High School traffic light and roll-off truck.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. And now, we are on to-- Did someone say something? Item three.
Oh, I said, I said, "Thank you," sorry.
Oh, you're welcome. And that did not include the dump truck, correct?
No, that's the next item.
Yep. Thank you. Go ahead with that, Chris.
Yeah, so this is just, this was already approved at the Maytown meeting for, it was a capital item. It's to replace one of our Mack dump trucks with an international, a 2020, I believe it is. This has just authorized us to purchase it, or at least to sign the contract. It's through the state bid list, so it's all, we didn't have to go out to do procurement. We bought it right off the state bid list. It's for a total, well, it's actually for $82,250 with Madigans, who's actually outfits the truck, and $70,241.25 with Colonial Municipal Group.
Okay.
Ready for motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move that the Board vote to approve DBW's purchase of a 2020 international dump truck.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so, we are on to item 3E. We have a Sewer Working Group update.
Joe, were you expecting that Nick is going to be on the call? Because otherwise, I think one of us could give it pretty quickly a summary here.
Nick is raising his hand, and he should be on his way to being a panelist.
All right.
Hey, Joe, you ready for me?
Yes.
Hi, Nick.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Is the power up there, Nick?
I'm not sure what's going on, you know? They can't hear you, they can't see me, Paul.
You look like you're in a music video from the 80s.
Let's hope it doesn't turn into that. Yeah, just a quick update, like Paul said, the work group's been working very hard, trying to get this article into good shape for Fall Town Meeting. Kind of the part of the analysis we're on right now is trying to figure out how to phase the town into the permitted discharge site of the high school. So, we're trying to come up with a phasing plan that makes the most sense, and also trying to figure out still where to put the human plant, if it is, does stay in Littleton. We are looking at regional solutions as well. So, by the time we get to town meeting, we should have everything looked at for the residents. So, I mean, I don't know if there's any specific questions that you guys want answered. I know we're doing this every couple weeks, just to kind of keep it in front of you.
Yeah. How are the videos being received? The, the tape things, have you, you've got, what, two or three of them done now?
Yeah, we've done two of them. I know one has aired on LCTV, the other one might be airing this week.
Are they leading to any feedback or anything?
Yeah, I think they're informational. I think they're a little bit long, but there's a lot to tell. So, you know, we'll work with LCTV, the folks there have been great, to try to come up with ideas on how to get information out, have it be the full story, but also make it so people actually want to watch it. But yeah, I haven't had any negative feedback from them.
Was that video, was it with LCTV?
Yeah.
LCTV.
Sewer updates on, there are videos that Nick put together with the help of Kirby that are on LCTV, so.
I gotta start watching.
Yeah, I'm going to get those circulated onto social media too as well. But they're very, lots of information with respect to this project, but I know that the public's really looking forward to learning more about it.
Yeah, LCTV and their staff have been tremendous as far as scripting it and trying to get it in a format that is helpful to the residents.
Yep. That's great stuff. Any other questions for Nick on the sewer, sewer project, Sewer Working Group update? So, we could go on to the next item, which is 3F, regarding the amended language to House Bill 4866. Nick, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. This is again, kind of, just a little house cleaning. There's, there's two parts to the home petition. Senator Eldridge got this off to EEA, and so, and then with their review, and Senate Counsel's review came, came these amendments. They're not really anything substantial, they're more part one-- They're not really anything substantial. The more, part one talks about the deed and the property. It's in the language that EEA would like. And number two also addresses EEA to make sure that the article and the home petition meet all the Article 97 land disposition policies that need to be met. So it doesn't really change the article at all. It just makes it more acceptable language for EEA and Senate Council.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. So I know that I think we had a motion to approve those amendments. And I wanted to just talk to the board about the process on this maybe going forward since, you know, time is of the essence and there's been in anticipation of possibly future changes to this. I wanted to just see if maybe the board would be interested in not having to have this come back to the full board in future and maybe just authorizing me as the chair to undertake any action going forward as long as there are minor changes. It didn't require anything significant, you know, and that would be determined by the, by the water commissioners. If they felt that it needed to come back to the board, we bring it back to the board. But if it's just minor, you know, inconsequential language, then if the board would object to having me, appointing me as part of this motion to be the point person just to approve that language instead of just in the, in the spirit of time, you know, time is of the essence. We just need to move this forward as quickly as possible.
Me personally, under the circumstances we're under, I'm fully comfortable with you, you doing that. Instead of having, you have to come back to us if it's, if it's minor.
Right.
Just take care of it.
Right.
I have no problem with that either. However, I think it's be prudent that, and Nick's living some of this right now. House Counsel and Senate Counsel get very particular about some of this stuff and they may want a very precise documented vote trail. If not, you know, I would say maybe that question ought to be run by council, town council first to see if, you know, they think there's any problem with that. But personally, I don't have any issue with it. I'm just concerned that what we think we're doing is to speed things along might actually turn into a problem if the language is changed and it's not supported by an authorizing vote.
Okay. And so we could have the vote subject to approval by town council. Does that sound okay, Paul?
Well, I just want to run this issue by council. I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't mind just having the chair make minor changes. I just want someone to double check from a legal perspective. Is the House or Senate, anybody there, you know, now that their legal council have already got their hands on this stuff and they seem to be quibbling over small points, I don't want to create a small point that they can quibble over.
Okay. So how do you want to move forward with the vote tonight?
I go forward with the vote, but just as you indicated, you know, as long as council is comfortable with it.
Okay.
Nick, do you understand what I'm saying here? I'm not, certainly not trying to
I mean, it's a good point. House changed the bill and they didn't require the selectmen to vote on it. Senate changed it and they did. So it's, it's hard to tell what they're going to require.
Okay.
Okay.
And, Madam Chair, if I, if I may, perhaps we take two motions. One to approve the, the language that was in the packet with the amendments. And then a second to then authorize the, the chair to approve minor non-substantive edits as approved by, by council. And if we needed to schedule because of timeframe, a special Zoom meeting, we always could. Or take it up on, on the 8th when we have our next meeting.
Okay. I think that sounds good.
So we don't, really don't need a separate motion for that, Joe. You're just pointing out how we could get ourselves out of that fix if we happen to get in, right?
Yep.
So you want that motion, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
All right. I think everyone's all right. Then I'll move the board vote to approve amended language for House 4866 as drafted.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So the motion is approved as written. And are we going to do the second motion or not?
I don't, I don't know that a motion's necessary for it. It's just if we run into that situation, we just call a special Zoom meeting, right? I mean, if it happens, we do it, right?
Okay. All right. All right. So now we are on to item number four, public input and members' updates. Do we have any public input?
Madam Chair, we have one hand raised.
We have George Sanders.
Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Sanders. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Can you hear me?
We can.
My name is George Altham Sanders, Senior, 672 Gray Road, Littleton. I wanted to address this honorable body here with regards to a few matters that is of great concern to me as a citizen, a town of Littleton, and also as a citizen of United States of America. I send a petition to you because I feel first and foremost that sometimes bodies have a tendency to forget what the resident or the citizen rights are on the U.S. Constitution, as well as in this particular state, the Massachusetts constitutional rights. We are citizens. We have the right to submit petitions and agreements and advise our elected officials with regards to matters that we deem that is of great concern to us as a citizen. I don't anticipate any body, government body trampling over those rights of mine. When I found information that is of concern to me as a citizen, regardless as to how I may have obtained the information or whether someone called me, left a message, mailed it to me, or sent an email and et cetera. The important thing is I have the right as a citizen to voice my opinion in supporting any citizen or organization with regards to any matter that may come before this honorable body. And in doing so, it is always nice to have information from different perspectives from other individuals with regard to certain things. And the communication that I've sent to this honorable body is the same way that I've done over almost 23 years. The 8th of September next month will be 23 years as a resident in this town. I don't look for trouble. I always try to spend my energy and time being positive about things. But whatever I say verbally, I have no problem putting it in writing. And I've always sent information. Did someone interrupt that, say something? Was someone saying something to me?
No.
Oh, okay. Send information into, sometimes it's individual elected officials. And of course, I've always sent to the town administrator. When I first came here, Mr. Tim Goddard was the town administrator. And I started off because for most cities, they use petitions when they petition the council. And I was doing that. He said, George, you don't have to do that. You just put it on a piece of paper, send it to me. You know, we'll get it, we'll get it to the selectman or you can send it to the selectman. I know you got a lot of stuff to do here tonight. And I have a lot of concerns about the things that I've written to you, this honorable body, and, and expressed my concerns about what I feel in turn. I'm not trying to do your job. I just simply want to have the right to express if I approve of something or if I disapprove of it. I have the right to voice that and to say that. And I don't want no one trampling on my rights to be able to do that. And I find that I've always, you know, been supportive pretty much of the selectmen board because I think it's a difficult and a hard time consuming board. And especially with other boards in the town as well. But there's a lot of things that's going on now that's a lot different than years ago. We had this coronavirus upon us. I express my opinions to where I think that the focus point should be in this town, dealing with the issue. And I respect you as officials and I'd like for you to respect me as a citizen. And I'm just simply trying to do what I think I should say or do. And I really just don't want no one trampling on my rights to be able to say that or to do that because I have those rights to do that. I have the right to voice my opinion. Whether, whether you accept it or not, that's, that's up to you. Everybody has an opinion. And I respect people's opinion. You need to respect mine. I don't disrespect anyone and I don't berate anyone. And maybe you don't like the expression that I use as the way I speak sometime. I'm from the South. And my voice is heavy. And it's not so much that I'm emphasizing when I speak about something. I just have a Lord voice that commands and get it out and tell you what it is. And that's me. I have many years in the political arena. I know my way around in the political arena. I don't like to create any problems. I just like to go about things in a respectful way and do what needs to be done. I'm not going to get into any specifics here. I sent the communication to you all. You have the communication. You know what I said. I said it. And I stand up for what I say and what I believe. That's the way I've been. That's the way I'm going to continue to be. And ain't nobody going to change that except God when he take me off this earth. I, I just, I just feel that sometimes that, you know, you, you have to remind people sometime that when they, they, they get into a, a position of authority sometime, sometime they, they don't quite understand sometime that, you know, there's, there's two ways of communication or more. And it's important to understand that people will address things and will say things that, you know, as an official, you may not like it. But the fact of the matter is they have that right to speak and to say that with courtesy. And in doing so, you have the right to refute it. But one thing you don't have the right to do is to trample on their rights. I thank you, Madam Chair. I thank this honorable body for giving the opportunity to express, express my concern here this evening. Thank you.
Great. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Do we have any other people for public input?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. So we're on to member updates. I will start with Mr. Glavy, please.
I don't really have a specific update on any topic of interest, other than I'll take this moment to, since I'm following Mr. Sanders directly to, to say personally how much I enjoy his participation, respect the thought and thoroughness of his, of his, his work on all the subjects that he takes on passionately. And that doesn't mean we're always going to agree, but I'll say this much. I'm glad he's a part of the process. I enjoy him. I think he is a great representative of the town of Littleton's citizenship, citizenry, rather. And I wish more people would get as involved as he does.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Nordhaus?
A week ago Saturday, I attended the India Day at the, on the Common. It was sponsored by the India Association of Greater Boston. It was the 74th anniversary of India's independence. Normally, they have a large celebration in Boston, but because of COVID, what they did instead was celebrated a ton of small towns around the Commonwealth. And Senator Eldridge and Representative Arciera was there. It was the first time I was ever referred to as a dignitary, which was very pleasant. They hoisted the American flag and the Indian flag. We sang both national anthems and I read the proclamation, which the board signed. And it was a lovely ceremony. So it was, it was a nice thing to do and decent turnout.
That's great.
Yeah.
Mr. Knox?
Hey, just quickly, over the summer, I've had the ability to be on the, the COVID Recreation Working Group. And I think it was a great idea to form that group because it keeps everyone informed of what's being done to, to work around the problems that we have with COVID in recreation. And I really want to thank the Park and Rec for their, their work they've done on this, on the summer programs that they, they went through. They had the camp and they used the, the Long Lake and they never had any problems with COVID. The, Jim Griffey from the Board of Health would visit once in a while and he actually did a surprise visit. And he was happy to find out that everyone was going by the guidelines that had been, had been spelled out. And, and the Park and Rec is continuing with the late start in school. They're going to keep a program going so that parents can stay at work. And they're also working on a program that might be using O'Neill Cinemas.
Oh, wow.
So when kids are, instead of being home, they could be doing their virtual work there. So I just give them credit for, you know, during these difficult times, they keep kids active and they, they, they followed the guidelines. And I know on TV last night, I saw something about the town of Sudbury having a camp and was on TV how it went well. Everyone followed everything and they had no cases of COVID. I just want to congratulate our Park and Rec for doing the exact same thing.
Yeah, that's great. That's, that's very commendable on their part, certainly. And I think that's pretty neat if they're going to try to do some schooling at, at O'Neill Cinemas. Very fortunate to have that in our town. I think that's wonderful. So I have a few updates for the board tonight. So if you want to just bear with me for a minute, it's been a busy couple of weeks. And actually, I'll start with what Mr. Layden put up on the screen here. So I had the pleasure of meeting with a group of sixth grade girls this Saturday. And we actually held a mock select board meeting at the gazebo. And it was really a lot of fun. We set it up, set up the gazebo like a boardroom. I borrowed the American flag from the fire department. And we went through a board meeting and explained to them the role of each members of the board. And we discussed the leash law and we discussed changing the name of select men to select board and why that was important to them as young ladies in, in our community. And back to, with respect to the leash law, they, as you know, I've been working with a group to revise the leash law. And a lot of the issues that they identified and the suggestions that they brought forward to correct those issues were spot on with what the committee had brought forward. And they actually had one other addition that I'm going to bring back to the committee was one thing we didn't discuss was the size of the dog. Does it matter if you have, you know, a group of small dogs? Could you have more than three being managed by one individual as opposed to if you had three large dogs? So that was an interesting conversation. And the other thing that I realized for our board is that when we voted to amend the name from is that when we voted to amend the name from Select Men to Select Board, we never voted to amend our Select Men's Policies and Regulations to change that language in our own Select Policies and Regulations. So we, at our meeting Saturday with this group, we actually voted to recommend to the Select Board that we change the name of our, the reference in our Policies and Regulations from Select Men to Select Board. So I wanted to bring that forward to you tonight on behalf of, of these young ladies. And I just wanted to say hello to them. I don't know if they're watching, but to Lauren, Julia, Eve, Annabelle, Emily, Lillian, Olivia, Asashi, and Nina, as well as Katrina and Linda, who helped pull the event together. So it was really a lot of fun, and I hope I get to do that again sometime.
Did you finish on, on schedule?
We did finish on, we were ahead of schedule. Thank you, Matthew. We're actually ahead of schedule.
Another win.
Another win, right? The other thing I just wanted to, as I just mentioned with the leash law, brought together a great group based on the meeting that we had. A lot, we had a lot of public input that evening and brought that group together. And we've actually come up with some suggested changes to the leash law that we'll bring back to the board, hopefully at our next meeting, and to have you review it, get it in front of Town Council and approved and ready to bring before the voters in October. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Sustainability Committee. We had voted in three new members, and we actually had a meeting of the Sustainability Committee last week. It was a really great, productive meeting. It was nice to bring that group together again. And they, one of the things that we did identify that really the mission statement of the Sustainability Committee needs a little reworking. It's been a while since we've taken, taken a look at that. So they're going to, we, subgroup of that group is going to work on that and bring it back to the Select Board for us to take a look at to see how we can make that committee a little bit more better and more productive. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Housing Trust met last week. We are going to be working with a consultant to try to finally define what is affordable housing in Littleton. What does that number look like? What does that, those housing types look, look like? So that we can just have a better working relationship with developers going forward. And then finally, just the Cultural Council is moving forward with their Kindness Rocks Garden Project. And they were very appreciative of the $5,000 that they were surprised to find in their budget this year. And that was thanks to the Select Board. So they wanted to extend a thank you to the Select Board for that nice surprise. And...
I just have one more. I, I want to echo, I've been, I did watch several of the working group, the Park and Rec Working Group meetings. And I have been consistently impressed with their ability to handle this fluid situation and adapt and provide services for the town. I feel like they, they did, they've done a great job. And I just wanted to call them out for that.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you. So we are on to now our joint meeting with the Council on Aging to discuss the EHS space needs. So I see that Marge is on, on the call. And is the rest of your board with you, Marge?
We have seven board members, I think.
Okay.
Yes.
I see Patty. All right, wonderful.
We're missing two, that's all.
Okay. All right, great. So the COA Board had asked, they had submitted a request to our board with respect to, and I'm just looking for that memo from them. They had met and discussed some space needs issues facing the Department of, the COA Elder and Human Services. And the thrift shop, there's space in that department that's currently utilized by the thrift shop. And they were looking to see if that space could maybe be utilized for an outreach coordinator. They, so they wanted to bring that before the board for us to discuss and, and talk about. It's, it's difficult during this time, especially with the pandemic. We've been reconfiguring space throughout Town Hall for all of our departments. And certainly, we know that the Department of EHS and the Council on Aging has been short of space, lacking space for many years. So Marge, I didn't know if you wanted to maybe speak a little bit more about the discussion that took place with your board and the recommendation to us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would love to. About, probably a month ago now, I became aware of the fact that we had a little bit of a problem in EHS as a result of the reconfiguration of the amount of people that were safely allowed to be in each room in Town Hall. As I understand it, every room has been assessed for that. And that really changed the ballgame for us. For people that don't, aren't familiar with the space, it's important, I think, that everyone understand that we have four staff in Elder and Human Services, a full-time director, and her office is small. And she, only one person is allowed in there at one time. And then we have an assistant director, part-time assistant director and part-time outreach worker. And her office allows two people. And we have an outreach worker who was, is full-time. And her office now allows one person. And that primarily, I mean, then we have an administrative assistant. And in her office, only one person can be. So we actually have very non-functional office space in a way because if I were to go meet with the director, we have to find another place to meet. We can't meet in her office anymore because it's so small. So that brought to our attention, especially the full-time outreach worker whose office only allows one person, which would be herself in there. She has no way of seeing clients, and that's her job. And so it was like, okay, Houston, we have a problem. So we started, I started looking at the rooms and talking with people. And if you are aware, I think most people are, the Select Board probably are aware of the space. But it's a little area right off from the tennis court end of the building on the second floor. And so we have these offices, which really are non-functional in many ways because they, each person, if they have to meet with somebody or two people, have to find another space to do that. But the primary really driving factor to my, my way of thinking is the fact that we have a full-time professional outreach worker who can't meet with anyone without using a different room. Now, we have two rooms, two-room 230 and 234, which have been determined to be able to accommodate four people at one time. And that's it. So now, if you think logically about, okay, we could put a full-time outreach worker in a room with, that accommodates four people. That's great. That solves that problem. But it leaves one remaining room for all of the rest of the staff, the other part-time outreach worker, as well as the director, as well as the administrative assistant, who does sometimes have to talk to people quite a bit, actually. And the, I missed somebody. But the, of the four people, you know, you just, it's too, it doesn't make sense to put the outreach worker in one of those rooms because it would just cramp everyone's style as far as having functional meetings at all. And plus, if you have, you have outreach workers, they're professional people. And I know that everyone would be coming into EHS with, you know, an appointment. But most often, you know, you might have a senior couple, and sometimes one of the, the son or the daughter comes with them. Or you have another, you have, we've had situations where a mother with three kids has come in and needs immediate help with housing or with food or something. And she couldn't even be with her children and talk to the outreach worker in privacy. And confidentiality is mandatory. So, you know, we looked at the space, and right in the middle of this, our space is the Room 234, which is the thrift shop. Now, the thrift, thrift shop has been sitting, not being used at all since COVID arrived, and I think it was March 13th when Town Hall got closed down. And it just doesn't seem to make sense not to utilize this space while we're in the midst of this COVID situation. And we just don't have room. We don't even have really good space for the outreach worker. So it just made sense to me, anyway, to bring it to the board for discussion. And we did that on August 10th. And I, you have the memo with a summary of, you know, some of the information that I obtained. For instance, the fire chief, Scott, had commented and said that he did not recommend and did, could not see that the thrift shop would be opening anywhere near in the future. It would be very difficult to manage the space and decontaminate it, et cetera. And then we have, we did find out that that area, Room 234, can accommodate three people at one time. So we are suggesting and asking that EHS be allowed to use that space while the thrift shop cannot function, cannot be open because of COVID. And it would be just silly to keep it sitting there vacant all this time, you know, until whenever, because we don't know what the future holds, whether it'll be December or a year from now before, you know, we start to see things, get back to a little bit of what we all think of as being normal. And essentially, that was the, we had quite a discussion about it. The board voted in favor of bringing the recommendation forward to you, and so we did. And I'd be happy to, I mean, we talked, we tossed around ideas like, well, somebody suggested moving her to another space down by the library, for example. And, you know, that's just not professionally really acceptable. You don't take, when you're dealing with healthcare and dealing with clients, you don't want to separate one individual from the rest of their supporting team because you never know when you need some support from one of your team members with the client. So it just does not make sense to remove the outreach worker from the immediate EHS office space area. And we had other, you know, many discussions and thoughts and thought about different spaces. But this just made sense to us. So there is our suggestion. In a nutshell, I see Patty has her hand raised. And I forgot to officially open our meeting, but I just jumped right in. But we are officially having a board meeting here, too.
Okay, great.
Patty, did you want to say something?
Yes, I would just like to iterate, following up Marge's comments. I worked for the state for 38 years, healthcare, human services, dealing with an office, being in charge of it. And it is really not at all productive to have your social workers, outreach workers, or any of your staff having to perform their job under circumstances where their support team is not located where they can be reached. Second of all, when a family comes in or another individual, and particularly seniors, come in with their family or caretaker, you can't separate them and say, no, you can't come in and sit here because we can't allow you in. There's no space. That's going to unnerve the client and really get them very upset. So coming from that field, I'm looking at it as being, we're not doing our job in EHS if we can't provide a setting for our workers to do their job. And it's nothing to do with removing the thrift shop from not opening. It's looking at EHS performing the job that they're supposed to be doing. And sure, we're in the middle of a crisis right now, and we're not at the norm. And we don't know when we're going to be. But our job now is to do what we have to do to perform our job. So I think we have to consider this proposal as a serious matter. And I just want to iterate that, coming from that field. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Patty. Marge, are there any other members on your board that want to speak?
If you do, raise your hand, folks. I don't see anybody raising their hand, and I guess not right at the moment. So do we have, if you have questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Okay, thank you. I actually wanted to ask Mr. Layden a question. So with respect to the library project, do we know what the timeframe is when that, when we anticipate that they're going to be vacating Shattuck Street?
I can get back with more of a definitive date, but I believe we were talking about, about a 16 to 17 month project schedule. Since we're already two months into it, you know, we're looking at a little over a year.
Okay.
So, but for, for purposes as far as planning, I can find out from the project managers as far as what the current end date is.
Okay. All right, because I know we've been working, you know, on the space needs, and we've been looking at, you know, other locations for a senior center. And I don't know if you have any update on that at this time. But just trying to figure out what, the big question is what's going to happen to the library space when the library vacates Shattuck Street? And I anticipate, based on the feedback that we did get from the architects and professionals that we did hire to evaluate the Shattuck Street building, it's really not in bad shape by their assessment. And certainly, we could, you know, utilize this space for years to come. There was no real need to, immediate need to vacate this space. So I anticipate that there'll be some shifting of departments within, within this building itself with the, when the library vacates in, in the event that the COA does vacate eventually as well. So I'm just trying to figure, you know, listening to Marge's comments and Patty's comments, it seems to me reasonable to request that that space, the thrift shop space, be utilized for an outreach coordinator. But just trying to figure out, go, the next step beyond that is where else could we put the thrift shop? And I again, think that we could find another spot for the thrift shop here at Shattuck Street. It just might be, it's going to be dependent, though, on other, other departments being shifted around. So I don't know if any other, any Select Men, Select Board members have a comment or...
I have a couple of comments. This is the only topic we're talking about is space, nothing else.
Right.
Because I was led that there was going to be other, other things that were going to be talked about. As far as space goes, we obviously have a problem. The question I have for you, Marge, is when you had this discussion at your last meeting, was there friends at that meeting?
Nancy, yeah, there were two friends that were on with us.
Did they have any objections to what, what your plans were?
Only one of them spoke, and she understood the need. I think their big concern is that, you know, they might never get any space. And I, we don't know down the road. It's hard, I mean, obviously, we want them to have space. I don't not want them to have space. But right now, for this immediate need, it just made sense to utilize the space and then keep our eyes open for additional space. Or when, as things, you know, get better, and hopefully, they're going to get better, then, you know, we can relook everything and see what the situation is then. But I, right now, people, you know, EHS staff, the town employees need to be able to do their jobs.
No, I, I don't disagree with that. I think it's probably the only move that we can actually make. I just wanted to make sure that the friends as a group were aware of this. And I think, under the circumstances, since a room can't be used for a thrift shop in the near future at all, and we don't know how long that's going to the near future at all, and we don't know how long that's going to last, if that's a solution to keep, to keep EHS so you can function in the proper way, I don't have a problem with this.
Madam Chair?
Certainly, Mr. Glavy.
Yeah, my sentiments are pretty similar to Joe's. This looks like an obvious solution, but, you know, given just issues in the past, you know, I want to make sure that we don't put anybody's nose out of joint unnecessarily. So if we're going to make this kind of change, make clear that it's not necessarily a permanent change, it's clearly to deal with the COVID period, and that that message is conveyed, you know, perhaps Madam Chair by yourself and Joe Layden, just so the friends understand, you know, and with the Council on Aging folks present as well. But I think just handling it, how it's handled is probably as important as doing it.
Good point.
Mr. Nordhaus?
I agree, this is an obvious choice for EHS to have the space. And it strikes me that if we get into a situation where the thrift shop can reopen because COVID is no longer a danger, the other rooms that EHS is using may very well have their occupancy restrictions lifted, and we may have more options at our disposal. So I think, yeah, I agree with Mr. Glavy. We should make sure that when, when and if the thrift shop can come back, we're advocates for finding space someplace appropriate. And I, and I hope we'll have more options when that happens.
Right.
But, yeah, I, we need to, I think we clearly need to make this happen right away.
I agree. Great. So I don't know if there's any further comments this time. Do we have a motion on this, Joe, or?
I think I had discussion dependent, so can come up with.
Do we even need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Just an administrative matter.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need a motion, just direct.
Just as long as we, it's memorialized and, you know, it's just going to be temporary, and then when normalcy does resume, we'll, you know, do diligence and try to, you know, reconfigure and find a space for the thrift shop going forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Revisit it at that time. All right. Okay. Great. Thank you, Marge.
Do I see a hand raised? Anita's hand? No, no, I'm sorry, Cindy.
That's okay. I think we're all set on discussing on this. Was there a hand raised?
I don't see any hands raised in the.
Madam Chair, does the COA need to close our meeting?
Yes.
Yes, we do. And so I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. So moved, Maureen? Thank you. There we go. She's so moved. David seconding. Maureen and David, and I will take a roll call vote. Maureen? Yes? Okay. Marge? Susan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
Anita? Yes, she's muted. Wendy, welcome, Wendy. Good to see you. And would, do you agree to adjourn the meeting? Okay. Thank you. David? All right. I think we're good.
Good to see you all. Be safe.
Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate it, and we will, we have to somehow make arrangements to get that room vacated, emptied out, so. That will be next, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we are on to item, oh, look at us, ahead of schedule. Just saying. Item six, Select Board Discussion, Town Administrator Position Posting. So this is something that I had asked to be brought forward to the board. As you are aware, we are going to, we almost completed our, filling the positions for our Town Administrator Search Committee. I thought, given in light of the timeframe, that it would be prudent to post the job now. I did double check with members of the prior search committee with respect to this job posting, and there, any changes that had been discussed last time, you know, were incorporated in this. I didn't know if members had a chance to look at the job posting, or if they had, it's really just the job description, if they had any other further comments or revisions that they wanted to maybe talk about.
Well, I have one point, Madam Chair. Fine with the language as is, although on the job description itself, just given recent, you know, recent history and, and not knowing what the task might come up with for recommendations along the way, or what our own board might deliberate, I'd just like to see somewhere in there, in the job description itself or in the posting, that it's, you know, specific language subject to change.
Okay.
Maybe it won't, maybe it will, but at least it, you know, puts people on, you know, lets them know that it might be.
Okay. I wonder if there is some boilerplate language in there?
Is there? If there was, I apologize, I'm missing it.
No, no. Like boilerplate language that gets incorporated into job descriptions like that. That's a good point, Paul. We can definitely look at that and make sure there's some flexibility in there.
Yeah.
Okay. So is there any, any thoughts on any objection to posting the position now?
No.
Okay. All right, great. So we will go ahead and follow up with HR about getting that job posted. That would be wonderful. Town Administrator Search Committee update. So we have, as this search committee is governed by statute, select board member is appointed to the committee, along with a member of the school committee. The school committee has appointed Justin McCarthy to sit on the committee. The finance committee appointed Greg Champney, and the personnel board appointed Gary Wilson, just as an update to the board. So the last spot to be filled on the committee is a member with municipal management experience. I talked to town council about this. We ran into some issues with that language, just because having a resident who also has municipal management experience, and we're just going to reference Tim Goddard, our town moderator, because he is a member of the Mass Municipal Managers Association, we learned last year that he is prohibited from sitting on a search committee that's going to fill, you know, decide on the hiring of another municipal manager. So we could not utilize him for the purpose of this committee. I talked to town council about who could fill that spot, and, you know, he said it could be a former select board member. You know, he said, basically, his instruction to me was, you have the language, you just do the best you can with the way it's written, and just get it, you know, someone as close as you can that can fill that position. So we have talked before, and I think the, we as a board need to revisit that, the way that is written anyways, just because it just seems to be, it needs some updating, and it is a little, a little difficult. I'd like to see some changes to that. So that's something that we can discuss at another meeting. But in the meanwhile, I do believe that we had someone come forward, or who would fit the position of, someone with municipal management experience.
So we did have, and I forwarded this out to the board this afternoon. Ivan, and I'm going to kill it, his last name, Pacasik?
Pagasic.
Pagasic.
There we go.
Yeah.
That's a good choice.
Who had emailed the select board last week with a letter of interest. So that email was forwarded out to the board this afternoon.
I think Ivan is familiar to most board members. He's a former select board member.
I've served with him before, and he's been with the Light and Water.
Right. Yep. And I believe he has management experience on its professional side as well. Are you familiar with Ivan?
Indirect. Just a town meeting.
Okay. Paul, do you have any comments or questions?
I think Ivan's terrific. He's an easygoing guy, and he's got a great variety to his job background and municipal background. He's been on Park and Rec, he's been on Light and Water, he's been on the Selectmen, so he's, you know, getting a lot of different perspectives. He'd be good.
All right, great. So do we have a motion?
I can do that, if you're looking for it. Is there one in here, Joe?
Okay.
Yes, all right. A move that the board appoint, how do we pronounce that, Joe? Ivan Pagasic to Town Administrator Search Committee as a member at large with municipal experience. Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. And Ivan is the final appointee to the Town Administrator Search Committee, and I will follow up with him and the other appointees to that committee to make sure they get sworn in, and we start that process right away. And next on the agenda is Item 6E, Letter of Support for House Bill 4865 and 4866.
So Madam Chair, within the board's packet was a draft letter addressed to Senator James Bielskiewicz, basically reflecting the board's discussion at its last meeting to support the efforts of the Board of Water Commissioners and the staff of Littleton Water Department to urge final passage of H4866.
And Paul, I think I owe you an apology on that. I think I was supposed to circulate that with you as well.
No matter. That's fine. Would you like a motion?
Please.
Okay. Moves that the board vote to sign the letter stating the board's support of House Bill 4866 as drafted. Should that be 4865 and 4866? Joe?
The letter's just 4866.
Right.
Okay. The motion, though, was both, right. So let me rewrite the, or rephrase it. The move that the board vote to sign the letter stating the board's support of House Bill 4866 as drafted.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. And the motion is approved as written. And the next item is Item 6F, Letter to the MMA opposing the support of House Bill 4860.
So including your packet, and we did cover this at the last meeting, the board did vote to submit the letter, but I wanted to make sure as far as the tone and sort of the content that was referenced in the letter that Rutland had put together, that the board had a chance to take a look at, to make sure that it mirrored some of the same talking points that we want to put together in the, in the letter, so that I can start drafting one for the board to sign.
So any questions or comments from the board on that?
Madam Chair, for the most part, I like the Rutland letter. My personal concern is that we not weighed into a debate on the actual legislation, because we frankly haven't had enough, I haven't had enough information to know the details of it, and it's also very much a moving target, as all legislation is. This Rutland letter was written at a point in time, and, you know, that's about a month ago. So things undoubtedly have changed since then. But as far as the principal issue they raised, and the way they phrase it in this letter, which is MMA purporting to represent a consensus of town boards, when in fact, they hadn't sought nor attained that, that's a point I don't mind making, and this letter, for the most part, says that.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So I can take a stab at a draft and then distribute it, just to make sure that hits the point exactly as Paul mentioned.
Okay.
Okay. Then you want to, I'll read the motion then.
Please.
Yes. I have to first read it to make sure that Joe didn't, like, skip a word or, you know, do something here. Move that the board vote to submit a letter to the MMA expressing the board's opposition to the MMA's letter of support for House Bill 4860.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. So the motion is approved as written. And now we are on to Item 7A.
Did we do the reserve transfer?
No, we didn't.
Oh. No, we skipped over that. I'm trying to do some math right now as we're speaking. I got a last minute figure from council on that. If you just want to bear with me one minute. I don't know if you want to, maybe we can pick up with the discussion on the opening of town hall, if we could. Mr. Layden, will I do this, please?
I was going to say, if you want me to slow down, we're a little ahead of schedule, so.
Oh, wow. Is that clock right?
I don't want you to slow down, Joe.
It's actually a little fast.
Wow. Look at that.
Matthew, change the clock if you need to.
So moving on to Town Administrator Update, Continued Discussion on Operational Considerations for Reopening Town Offices to the Public. Back on Friday, I had sent an email to the board, basically with an update. At the last meeting, we had discussed how ideally we would be able to have a greeter put in place in order to basically observe and essentially monitor traffic coming into town hall. Also be allowed, they would be able to then do the initial sign and form, be able to verify that they're wearing masks, and if they're not, then call up to departments in order to have them come on down to assist them, so that they still are being serviced by town departments. It took a little bit of time, but we were able to identify our greeter. They're currently going through necessary HR steps, onboarding that will happen this week. So that effective August 31st, we'd be able to open the door for walk-ins. Again, we are open, but it's by appointment only. So proposing that walk-ins be allowed 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 9:00 to noon on Friday. That's mainly because some of the departments actually do have hours that close at noon. We would have someone at the main entrance here with tables, with protective Plexiglas, as well as all the necessary forms, and also a phone to be able to call up to departments or to my office if they needed assistance. Just to sort of clarify, this would be for town hall, would not address EHS, mainly because of the fact that they are limited staff, they have limited ability to have people come in. So it would still propose that for EHS, it is by appointment only, which is how they currently operate. Of course, it doesn't apply to the library. They have their own hours and their own entrance and programs. And that it also does not apply to DPW, because they are currently without a full-time administrative assistant, and that until that, that position is filled, DPW director had just asked that the opening to the public for walk-ins not apply to their office as well. They are also able to be, people are able to be helped by appointment, or of course, through website. A lot of the transactions happen at the transfer station anyways, so, you know, people are welcome to call to the DPW. So we're going to put some additional signage in place as far as limiting places to go, and also give us a chance through this week to put messages out on the website, on Facebook, and also let people know what to expect. And like previous discussions with the board, this will be something that we evaluate, that we see how it's working, and, you know, report back to the board as far as what, what our experience is, so.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board?
No.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you for the continued work on that, to everybody involved. So we can go back to the reserve fund transfer request. We had a figure that was provided by town council and working with HR. We did have some back and forth about unused vacation time that we were trying to calculate for. The former town administrator, Ms. Nazarian, is part of the agreement that she Town Administrator, Ms. Nazarian, is part of the agreement that she entered into with the Board. So we had a slight revision to that. So I have an updated figure for you, Mr. Layton. I don't know if you have a motion up or?
I, whoops, where did it go? I have the motion, we just have to read the, the correct dollar amount.
Yeah. And so this is, this is a recommendation we need to make to the Finance Committee. They're meeting tomorrow night. So I will share this updated number with them. It's a $113,619.80.
Eighty, is that what you said? Okay, okay. I've got that. Can I just ask a process question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
In talking with Cheryl, Budget Director, did, is there, was it the only place we could get money from the Reserve Fund, or was a calculation done to what extent the remaining line item, salary line item could fund all or part of it? Was that math done? Because I would have thought we might see a memo on that, you know, spelling that out.
Right. So this was, this was her recommendation to pay for this expense in this method? I did not ask her to, to provide a memo to the Board, and I know that she's on vacation this week. Did you want some more detail?
Again, I just have two, two thoughts. One is that, you know, there's existing appropriation for that position, which if, you know, if it's not, and it won't be being used, it'll, it'll just end up going into, you know, into free cash or whatever we're calling it at this point. So we get it back in next year, and Joe weigh in, Joe Layton, if I'm getting any of this wrong. But the other, the other thing I'm just a little concerned about is what the current appropriation is for the Reserve Fund. We're pretty early into the year, and this is a, you know, one of the few places you can get money from in short notice. And if we take $133,000 out of Reserve Fund, what does that leave our balance at in Reserve? And, you know, especially if we could be offsetting, you know, assuming that, say, half of that amount could just come from savings in the already made appropriation. I know it's tough to be asking these questions without Cheryl partying to the, to the conversation, but.
So, right. So the remaining balance, Paul, is about $75,000 in the Reserve Fund because there's been a couple of other expenditures.
Right.
For the landfill monitoring and some additional hours for accounting stuff.
Yeah. It used to be Reserve Fund was either for small dollar amounts where it didn't matter much, or bigger ones, if there's no other place, you know. We're beating it up just by observation. If we're making those kind of withdrawals from this early on, we're, we're taking a risk in not having a whole lot of money in a year with a lot of variables in it. I, I just wonder why she wouldn't have first suggested that X dollars out of the, out of the salary appropriation for the current year couldn't just be applied to that as a starting point, and then a differential paid out of Reserve Fund if need be.
Right.
I feel more comfortable with answers to those questions frankly, but I'll defer to the Board.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I don't have those answers, and fortunately, she's on vacation. I'm just trying to think logistically. We're meeting tonight to approve this request to FinCom. FinCom's meeting tomorrow night to approve this request. Cheryl's on vacation. So are you saying you want to defer this, Paul, until we get more clarification from Cheryl, or?
Well, I just would have expected there'd be some explanation, you know, in accounting for, you know, how the current appropriation is, plays into it all. And I would be surprised if the FinCom doesn't ask the same questions tomorrow night.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I don't have that.
And is there any, you know, if, is there any reason we can't get that straightened out before we vote? And I obviously don't oppose making the payment. I just want to leave us in the strongest position to weather the year, you know, and, and account for monies that the town already appropriated for that purpose in that line item.
Well, I guess it would depend on our next meeting date and then FinCom's next meeting date.
Yeah.
Time-wise.
And, and I'd like to hear what other members say too. It's just, just my thoughts on it.
Right.
I agree with Paul. Can we fit it in time-wise? I'm going to defer it if possible.
Okay. All right. When's our next meeting, Joe?
Currently, the eighth.
Is there an urgency to getting this transfer done and the payment made?
I thought we were going to make it, but just following the payroll cycle.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly defer. I don't have a problem doing that if you want to wait and, and get more, wait till Cheryl's back from vacation and get more information from her and raise your questions with her. Paul, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And, and Joe, could you convey to her what, you know, I can't imagine she's, wherever she is on vacation, watching this meeting, but if you can convey, or one of you can convey what the, you know, concerns are, I appreciate it. Or I can do that if you'd rather.
No, absolutely.
Okay. All righty. And now, review of special town meeting articles and deadlines, item 7B.
So Board members, in your packet was, as, as a reminder, just the special town meeting timeline, you know, specifically with the warrant closing at noon on September 10th, our special meeting on September 8th. But one of the things, just wanted to sort of discuss was that the next item down underneath the special town, town meeting warrant closing is Select Board Complete Insertion of Articles Sent to Warrant and Determine Order of the Articles and Recommendations on Articles and Hearings on Zoning and Acceptance of Roads, if any. That's for the Monday, September 14th meeting. Working backwards, and my principal concern was the accept roads, if any. Reason why I sort of worded this agenda item the way it was, was specifically backing out of that September 14th time to prepare legal notices and all of that. I had forwarded a deadline email to the town planner to forward on to developers saying, we need things in by Monday today in order to then schedule public hearings for layout. It is possible that then we can schedule hearings after that, but I'd rather have that from a timing perspective, the exception, rather than the rule, because we can always run out of, of runway if we cut things too, too close. There are four developments that we're looking at having roads accepted. Three of them submitted by the noon deadline today.
Okay.
There's one other that is working to finalize. So knowing that three out of the four got their stuff in, can schedule the hearing on the 14th. This last one, at least in talking to Marn, sounds like they're pulling it together this week. So at least my original concern that we'd have to be setting aside dates that then are really getting close to publication of the warrant and even up to special town meeting, that timing discussion, I think, sort of goes away now for that specific purpose. We'll have placeholders. We'll have to sort of work on when that last layout hearing will be, because we'll be able to have that layout hearing for Cooper Farms, for, for Durkey and Kay and Chestnut Lane. So we're just waiting for, for one more. So at least the flexibility that was originally going to be asking what the Board would typically do, we realistically don't need that at this point.
Okay.
So then we're basically just dealing with these list of 18 articles. I have sent these out to department heads again, as well as the town moderator and town council.
I'm not getting any. The audio had gone off for a moment on my end.
Can you, can you hear us?
Now, now it sounds all right. Yeah, I can hear you, Cindy, anyway.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Now I can, yes.
Okay. I'll make sure, rather than talking sideways to the Board, that I'm talking straight into the microphone. So this list of articles that included in the Board's packet has been sent to town moderator, as well as town council and department heads this afternoon to make sure that as we're moving forward this week and trying to add more detail into the special town meeting warrant, that anything that is not being considered, or that anything that is missed, that they give us heads up so we can include. I do have dog leash bylaw amendments from, you know, from the, the Board. If there's anything else that the Board thinks that we may need as far as changes to general bylaws or, or such, if you can, let me know so I at least can include placeholders. There's a good number of financial articles, Article to Risk and Previous, Vote of Town Meeting, Purchase of Tehadawana Brown Property, Some CPC Authorizations, Some Changes to Personnel Bylaw, Some Placeholders for the Sewer Project, and also some supplementary budget adjustments that may be necessary coming out of the Director of Finance.
Okay.
So that's sort of where we are right now. Diane has started working on the report, which then is the basis for the warrant as well. So we're off to a start on that. So that's basically an update for where we are with the warrant.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or comments from the Board on that? I think we're gearing up for that already.
I know.
Okay. And so now the next item would be 7C, Select Board Meeting Schedule 2020.
Joe, I, I assume October 13th is a Tuesday because the 12th is Columbus Day, correct?
Correct.
But the 27th is a Tuesday as well, and I'm guessing that's only, it's probably because you added 14 days to the 13th? Or did you pick that Tuesday for a reason?
You caught it. It should have been the 26th.
I had time on my hands this weekend, so that's why.
Who would pick up on that?
I know. Paul would.
I have an Affordable Housing Trust meeting on my schedule for the 13th.
Oh. We'll have to.
Move that.
Move that.
So other than changing the October 27th to the 26th, are folks fine with those Select Board dates as presented?
I need to look at the.
I wonder if those consultants are coming in that night, the 13th?
Doesn't appear with one Monday night Patriots game, but I don't think that's a big deal.
Let me see, November 9th and 23rd.
And one of the reasons why we need to set this is especially in October, there's some dates that Cheryl is looking for, for.
Tax classification and so stuff.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, Matthew and I were just having a little sidebar here. We have a consultant coming in on the Affordable Housing Trust, and I don't know if it's the night of the 13th or not.
Do you want to go for the?
Marn had circulated some proposed dates.
Want to go for the 19th and the 26th instead?
Hold on one second.
I'm okay with all the other dates.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially because we have then special town meeting that Saturday. If we needed to have a meeting to make any last minute changes to motions, we could also bump it to October 5th, which is a Monday, but then that would essentially be within the month of September.
Right. Oh, sugar, I can't find it.
Four meetings in a row.
Yeah.
I want to say, I don't know. I think we're, I think we're okay with the 13th.
Okay.
I think.
Okay.
Because I think that, I remember that date. So we'll just leave it the way it is.
We can always change it again, you know, if we need to later.
Yeah, we do have to. Okay.
All right. Is the Board ready for motion then?
Please.
Okay. I'll move that the Board vote to schedule regular meetings on October 13th and 26th, November 9th and 23rd, and December 7th and 21st.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. So we are booked through December 21st. And, okay, now we are on to next item. We have an update, a service counter, a project update.
Okay. So on this item, was hoping to have more of an update. Last week had, I believe I had let the Board know through updates as far as meetings with Vertex, as well as with PMBC Chair, as well as Ed Mullin, Building Commissioner. And Vertex was going to sort of work through a proposal of sort, at least identify some sort of scope to be able to bring to the Board tonight. But unfortunately, they weren't able to, to get detail, or at least get something that they felt that, felt comfortable bringing back in front of the Board. So this will just have to maintain communication between now and the next meeting and, you know, either pull the Board as far as the direction or handle it on the eighth.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. And then next item, general updates?
That was just in case there was any catchalls that we needed.
I like that. All right. Okay, good. And now we have the Deputy Fire Chief and Deputy Chief contracts.
Right.
And I think we resolved everything with those today, right, Joe?
Yes, I believe so. And, you know, in email to the Board sent off the, with Chief Patterson talking about his contract first, there were some, some last minute questions that Town Council had. Those were resolved with the assistance of the Police Chief. So that is all set for the Board to consider. Regarding Deputy Chief Clancy, there was a couple of questions. One on the longevity, another on adding similar language that was in Deputy Chief Patterson's. And that in the draft that I sent off to the Board was included in, in redline version, so you could see where those changes were. And again, the, the definition of what is just, just cause is, is at least now mirrored within Deputy Police Chief Patterson. And in talking to Ann Esman about how to reference the longevity pay, because of the three-year contract and because of where he is within his grouping, we'd actually have to, rather than have the dollar amount, we'd have to have two because all of, two-thirds of the way through the contract, he's going to then go into another grouping, which then would be a different value. So she had just recommended that rather than having the dollar figure, just say payable pursuant to personnel bylaw, and I have 33.22, I think I included in a revised motion that I did send in a separate email to Paul. But it's also in the draft contract that all of you have.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments from members of the Board on these?
Joe, when we get to making the motions, do you have the time periods? Because what I'm reading from here does not have them. Do you have a revised version of the motion? Can you just tell me?
Yep. I have that in the PowerPoint that then I can put on screen.
Great. All right. Are folks ready for this?
Please.
Okay. And I'll take the two of these motions, two of these first motions together, correct?
Yes.
Move that the Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 97A, to approve and authorize execution of an employment agreement with Deputy Police Chief Jeffrey M. Patterson for the period July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, as drafted, and move that the Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 97A, to approve and authorize execution of an employment agreement with Deputy Chief, Deputy Fire Chief George D. Clancy for the period July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made. And seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So those contracts are approved. Thanks to Mr. Decost for working on those and for Mr. Layden as well for getting those finalized and prepared for tonight's meeting. So we are now on to meeting minutes.
I know, the town administrator contract, interim town administrator.
Oh, there we go. Get me skipping again. Okay, great.
Making poor Joe sweat over there.
I know. Joe's like, wait a minute.
Hold on.
Peter Gonzalez over here.
You're just trying to get us out early, Cindy.
I am. So we have entered into a contract with Mr. Layden, who is going to be serving as our interim town administrator while we continue with, or begin actually, the search for a replacement town administrator. So we met with him and we came up with an agreement that we're going to vote this evening, and I don't know if Mr. Clerk.
I do have language.
But?
We good to go? Has anyone else sent any comment?
No comment. Nope.
Nope.
All said.
All right. Then I'll move that the board vote to sign the contract for interim town administrator, Joe Layden, as drafted.
Second.
Motion's been made. And seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So that motion is approved and that contract is approved. Thank you very much. And now we're on to minutes.
Okay. Once again, Sue Raymond does a great job in these minutes.
She does, too. These are good minutes.
I've seen bad minutes in the past. Not anybody in particular, but these are good minutes. Move that the board vote to approve the regular session meeting minutes of August 10th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made. And seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. The minutes are approved. Thank you very much, Sue, for your work on that. They are really good minutes. And so now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have to talk about something so you don't set a record for being.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made. And seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus? And Cindy Napoli is aye. That concludes the select board meeting for this evening. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Great meeting. Good night, all.
Good night, Paul.
Good night, Paul.